Love staying informed? Subscribe now and get unlimited access to local news, weather, and sports for just 99 cents a month for your first three months at inform.news/join. Read every story, listen to every podcast, and download the apps that keep you informed and on the go 24 hours a day. So head to inform.news/join right now to subscribe. What are you waiting for? Get three months of local news for just 99 cents a month at inform.news/join.
Welcome to Plan Talk. You know, nobody was expecting the legislature to be back in Bismarck next week, but that's what's going to happen thanks to a state Supreme Court ruling. And I mean, I guess I'll give the backstory a little bit because it's, it's easy to get lost in the weeds. But basically, the state legislature got it. They passed the pension reform. There's some tension with the state pension board over that. And what led specifically to the lawsuit that necessitated the special session was two claims. The first, that the legislature has been violating the state constitution's prohibition on multi-issue bills. The most egregious example of this is at the end of just about every regular session that well, every regular session that I have followed has ended with an office of management and budget, budget that includes all sorts of stuff. It's a catch-all bill. There's corrections to legislation that passed earlier in the session. There's appropriations in there. There's policy changes in there. The court finally getting it in front of them said enough's enough. They called the legislature on the carpet. And frankly, it's about time. They had this coming. The other thing that the court hasn't ruled on yet because it was moot because of the single issue thing. The pension board doesn't want lawmakers appointed to the board. But regardless, what legislature has to do now is they have to come back and they have to put that OMB budget back together, or I should say, break it apart because they have to break it into component parts. I think there's 14 different bills. Some of them are appropriations. Some of them are policy bills. And during this special session, which Governor Burgum just called, they're gonna, they're gonna pass them all. And here to talk with me about this, you know, we had the House Majority Leader on. Now we're gonna have the House Minority Leader. And who cares about hearing from anybody from the Senate side? No, I'm kidding. I don't know. I don't know how this broke down that we didn't have anybody on from the Senate, but it just did. Josh Moshe, how are you?
Great. Good to be on and continuing the tradition of making sure the House is heard first.
That's right. That's right. Those Senate guys can go pound. No, I'm not being terrible to our, our friends in the Senate.
Quiet part out loud.
Yeah. I have nothing against the North Dakota Senate. So, so we're gonna, we're coming into session. It seems to me kind of the drama here since Governor Burgum called, called the legislature back into session. And my understanding is, the reason why it's important for the governor, because you guys still have five days of your regular session left. People don't know, the North Dakota Legislature gets 80 days every two years. They've used 75, wink, wink, nod, nod, because you had some days there where you didn't gavel in too, you cheaters. But they have 75 technically days that they've used. They have five days left, but they didn't want to, the legislature didn't want to use it because if the governor calls you back in, there's something about when the legislature takes effect. Can you explain that, Josh?
Yeah, I know. And I think that's a key component because I kept forgetting about that aspect as we were talking, you know, all playing the chess game of, you know, is the governor gonna have the leverage to make the legislature call itself back in? Or do we have position to make sure that the governor calls us back in? And I think that's the linchpin. When the governor calls us back in for a special session, then the, any legislation we pass becomes law upon his signature because of the urgency of the special session. If we were to call ourselves back in and use those five remaining days, then the legislation, I believe it's 90 days, isn't effective until. And the big issue there is, while there's certainly going to be plenty of debate around the various policy and funding initiatives that got put into OMB, there are still public employees that work in OMB that need to get their paychecks as soon as October 30. And so if we, if we called ourselves back in, those employees, there would be no budget associated to the Office of Management budget, and they'd be waiting three months to get paid. And we don't want that.
So let me ask, I'm sorry, to just before we get to Ben's question, why, you mentioned that there being sort of tension or a chess game with the governor's office. Why? I mean, I didn't understand that. It seems to me the governor calling him back into session is the easiest way or the most salubrious way, I guess, to address with legislators got to address. Why was there a chess game at all?
Well, I think, you know, if I was not in any of those meetings, and neither were the minority leaders, as far as I know. But having been in previous meetings as the previous House Minority Leader with the governor, you know, he's an intelligent man. He's very thoughtful and strategic. And, you know, if I were the governor, it's why would I leave an open-ended session that could be, could run amok? I mean, we're even seeing from yesterday's conversation in the legislative management meeting, in which we were trying to determine the rules and whether or not, or how all legislators can participate in the bill introduction process. You know, there, there was a big debate about that. And I think there's strong consensus that we don't want this to be a runaway legislative session, that it should focus on the issues at hand. But we all also were elected to represent our districts. And there, you know, I have three small tweaks that I've found in the last three months that constituent groups or political entities have come forward and said, hey, if we can change a couple of words here, this would be easier for us to do that. So again, you know, it's a matter of, do I have to wait till January 2025? Or do I have an audience to entertain those fixes as soon as Friday or not?
Yeah. Oh, because essentially, if the governor calls you in, you're in, and he can't, he can't send you back out again. You're in until you're in. I guess theoretically, the legislature could just be in session in perpetuity if the governor called you in, if you just never went signee die.
Right. That's an interesting question I want to bring up. And unfortunately, I'm gonna go down the weeds, but I think it creates a good context for where we're at legislatively. Emergency clauses are bills, they're somewhat poorly named. Because the idea was, you have a bill that takes effect immediately, usually in the case of non-controversial bills, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, Representative Moshe, it's two thirds of both chambers have to vote for it, and the governor has to sign it. Is that correct?
In order for the emergency clause to carry, correct.
So when you're speaking about the 90-day implementation period, if the legislature was to call itself back into session, I'm wondering if it's not indicative of where the culture is at, that these are agency budgets, and one would presume, if you know about the emergency clause, which legislators do, that given that these are agency budgets, wouldn't you normally would assume they would get more than two thirds vote to simply reauthorize something that had already been in before the Supreme, had been set in place appropriated for a Supreme Court had put them in? Or, or am I barking up the wrong tree? And maybe that's not why it's the governor calling in versus the legislature? Am I, am I just kind of off there?
I think so. Because you have to back up. When we are in session, when we pass legislation, whether we pass it in January or April, which a lot of the key legislation gets passed, those bills don't go into effect until July 1 or August 1. They already have a timestamp, unless we have an emergency clause in which we have to have two thirds votes, whether it's a policy or a funding bill. And there's certainly state agencies who do not get the two thirds vote, even though there's an emergency clause in their budget. Because pick a legislator, we have a problem with an agency, or there's an agency we love more than another, you know, or they have, they did something, or they fund a program that we don't like. And so that just means that the policy and the funding that was passed in that agency bill doesn't go into effect till July, or excuse me, July 1 or August 1. It's just not on May 1 when it's signed by the governor.
To Ben's point, though, I took it as the fact that, because the problem is that the court has set a timeline here where, you know, they've essentially made the OMB budget unconstitutional immediately, as of that last opinion by my read. So I think the governor's office made it clear that like November 1 is kind of the, is kind of when, you know, the rubber hits the road, we got to get something done by. Otherwise, there may start to be impediments to governance. So the fact that, I mean, to me, it was kind of a tacit admission that although, you know, all the components of the OMB budget have already passed, it seemed to me a tacit admission that, that there's not confidence among leadership of getting a two thirds majority on those bills to just get it through, which to me, I perceived it as another indication of how fractured the legislature is, particularly the Republican majority. Now, Josh is gonna, as a member, the Democratic minority is gonna probably be very happy to call. But I mean, that was my perception of it is, is that, boy, they really don't feel like they can hold their caucus together on some of this stuff.
Well, and you don't have to look at it further than yesterday's meeting about how are we reining this in? Who's going to be, you know, the decisions that were made and the rules is that the two majority leaders are going to decide which legislators get to sit on these committees. It's not an election within legislative management like we do for our interim committees or other things. But they're trying their hardest to hold the line or control the process as much as possible. Because exactly as you state, Rob, I think there is concern about what can or can't happen otherwise, depending on who's sitting at the table around those conversations. You know, and then we back up again, Senate Bill 2015 had nearly 70 different sections in it. Those have all been compartmentalized now into seven different policy bills and seven different fiscal bills or appropriation bills. There are proposals that ended up in the final version of 2015, which needed two thirds to vote. So everyone ends up, a lot of people end up holding their nose and voting for it, even though there's a component they don't like about it. Now we all get an opportunity to narrow down our vote on some of those initiatives that ended up in that final version. I think, for instance, people are going to have consternation about the fertilizer plant. There's those of us that don't agree with the policy that was put on as it relates to the makeup of the PERS Board. You know, we get to have individual votes again on some of these, and some of them, we didn't have an individual vote or even a hearing on.
Well, the PERS Board, because that was kind of, Jermaine obviously was one of the, was the complaint, although the court hasn't settled it yet, was the appointment of legislators to the PERS Board. My, my memory is, well, I can't remember how both chambers voted, but it got floor votes twice and failed. And it wasn't until it was lumped in with the OMB budget that it finally passed. And so I'm not sure if that's going to pass on its own, I guess, is my, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I had an opportunity to visit with Representative Casper this morning, who's been a main proponent of the many changes to the PERS Board and the functioning of the PERS Office. And he reminded me in our conversation that he had a bill, and I don't know if it was specific to what the final version that was passed in the OMB bill is, but it passed 77 votes in the House, but was defeated in the Senate. So you're right, Rob. And I think there was two or three variations of that.
That's very interesting background. I did want to ask one more technical question about the governor calling in the session, because I saw that, I think it was via executive order, correct me if I'm wrong, that he declared that only be five days. My previous impression, clearly I'm wrong, that's incorrect, Josh is saying?
No, you're correct in what he has, but there is, he has no authority to limit the topic or the timeline. I think he's, you know, he's certainly trying to provide his strong recommendation to his board of directors, he considers us to be as the legislature by Friday.
The point is, Representative Moshe, he does not have the control to do that, which is why there's always been a hesitancy on behalf of most governors, understandably, because they don't want to have a session run amok by a handful of bad faith actors who are pushing things forward that we weren't initially there to debate. So you're,
I remember having this exact debate back when we were, we did a redistricting session not that long ago. And I remember the concern there that we were going to get a bunch of new policy bills. And listen, just, just in terms of process, I don't want, I don't want major policy changes or major appropriations being considered in special session. It doesn't have the same process. It's not the same, there's not the same rigor to it. There's not the same, I don't know what you want to call it, scrutiny that the legislation gets. Also, people aren't, you know, maybe, maybe like, like the deep-pocketed interest groups that, you know, have professional lobbyists on staff or contract with lobbyists, they can be prepared for a special session. But what about citizen people or volunteer groups? You know, how are they going to get down to Bismarck, take time off work at the drop of a hat, you know, to get down to Bismarck if all of a sudden some, some big policy question that's related to them comes up? So I think it's, I mean, if, again, unless it's an emergency, and in this instance, I think it's, if it wasn't in the OMB budget, then it shouldn't be considered by this legislature. But they just, they shouldn't be doing it. So I mean, I appreciate what Governor Burgum's trying to do. But I think to Ben's point, he didn't have the power to do it.
Right. Well, and on the, on the other side of that, Rob, is, you know, if the governor wants it limited, but now we're hearing the governor wants to bring his own proposals on theoretically new spending, you know, we ended June 30 with approximately $300 million more dollars in the 2021-23 budget than we had forecasted. So, you know, theoretically, that's on the table. He's going to have proposals. And now, I mean, I know myself and many other legislators, not just within my party, but in both parties, who are saying, well, if we're going to have a conversation about what, how we invest $300 million, I want my idea on the table too. And so he himself, by wanting to introduce more conversation in this, is, you know, allowing all of us to have an argument, say, well, if he's going to show up with a proposal, I want a proposal.
Which is weird. Like, why is he, why is he putting, like, he's trying to put a hard out date? And he's also like, but also, let's bring up some of my pet, and I'm not, I don't want to be dismissive of his policy agenda. I, you know, I'm supportive of his policy agenda. It's just not now, Governor. What are you trying to do? You're sending mixed messages too. Like, oh, we gotta be out by this date. But also, here's some other stuff we could do while we're, while we're all in Bismarck.
Representative, I want to get your follow-up on something that we talked to about Representative LaFleur about, I believe it was last week, Times of Flat Circle. He'd said that he has a stance where he'd really like there not to be any delayed bills coming through this session, which is kind of overlapping with what we're talking about. Yet he also said he intended on offering an amendment to be able to rule the, to be able to rule PERS Board members. What's your take on that? Do you find that to be a contradiction? Do you think you'd be supportive of what he's going to do? Do you think that's going to open the door for more legislation during the special session next week?
Ben, it's, I think, one of the biggest contradictions of the entire process. It, you know, we're, we're gonna, now that gets taken off the table because of what happened yesterday. So we do not have a delayed bills committee based on our rules anymore. But legislative management will serve as the funnel for bills that can be entered, you know, to deliberate what bills may be introduced beyond the 14 that we've already discussed. So, but there's also the amendment process once we get to committee, as you indicated, and as Representative LaFleur has said publicly, of, you know, what he wants to do or some of the ideas he has. So, so again, it comes back to that conversation. For those of us legislators that aren't on those committees, we don't have an opportunity to bring an amendment. And sure, it's been said, I can go testify and I can, you know, put an amendment out and see if someone on the committee wants to lift it up for me. But the reality is, is that that power, that ability is not become of all 141 legislators. It's going to be less than a third of legislators are going to have that opportunity.
And therefore, because it's selective, someone like Mike LaFleur would be able to offer that amendment to the PERS Board. What you're saying is not every legislator would be able to offer amendments like that. Is that correct?
Technically correct. I mean, theoretically, I can show up and testify in support or against something and say, I have an amendment I'd like you to consider. Whether someone on the committee adopts or presents it or not, I don't have the authority. I can say, here's my idea. But members of the committee can do that. So again, you know, part of that's relationship. So, you know, if I had that, I would have a conversation with someone on the committee, have it drafted for them, ask them to introduce it. But again, I don't get to advocate for it. I have to find someone else to advocate for, you know, it's just this process of, are we going to keep it focused? Or are we going to continue to expand the conversation in various ways?
It seems to me like, like everybody on this, everybody in this conversation right now is very interested in a quick session. But Josh, you've also said that you wanted more committees and more process. How would you be doing this differently? Because I mean, I understand everything that you're saying. But also, you know, we do, I want them to be very focused on a very specific agenda and get in and get out. So, you know, how would you design this? I mean, what, what could we be doing better?
Honestly, and there's the argument I made yesterday in the legislative management committee. We already have a structure in place based on the policy committees and the appropriation committees, our delayed bills, our rules committee. Those are all things that we can do and operate as efficiently as we're trying to do with this expedited session. You know, one of the real concerns that's been raised, and it's a valid, valid, valid concern, is staffing of committees. You know, we have to figure that out. But I think we can figure it out. Because the flip side of it is, we all are going to be meeting Monday. There might be hearings scheduled for Monday afternoon that we as legislators don't even know. So how can we expect the public, as it's been said before in this conversation, to be able to be ready to testify, especially if a bill gets introduced or an amendment gets brought forward that impacts, you know, the group of people they advocate for, or their profession, or, or anything like that? I mean, again, we saw this in the last special session in 2021. You know, bills were able to be introduced. There was one focused committee. People who were not familiar with some of the conversations were making decisions on behalf of it. And it was a madhouse because, you know, North Dakotans had less than a week or two in November to participate in the legislative process. And so I understand that we have all these conflicting issues, the timeline of October 30 to make sure we get OMB paid. You know what? Let's call ourselves in Monday morning. Let's pass the OMB budget. No one's, there's no controversy about the funding of the Office of OMB. Let's get it passed, get it signed by the governor. Those people can be paid. Then we can continue the rest of our, our process as we have.
You had commented, excuse me, you had commented, it got reported, I think in the forum last, yesterday, that you'd like to see other committees, to your point, besides the one committee that's going to decide these agency budgets. Can you kind of expound on that? Tell us what that would look like in your vision?
Yeah. Well, it would be the standing committees that we have in place already. Now, theoretically, depending on what bills get introduced, not all of those committees are going to have to meet. There may not be an agriculture or veterans-related bill. So that committee doesn't need to meet. But if we're having deep, intense conversations about the future of the PERS Board and policy related to PERS, that should go in front of the Industry, Business and Labor Committee, in which that, that committee has had jurisdiction over those bills, the majority of those bills, for a long time. We all, and I'm a member of that committee, have familiarity. We know the arguments. We have, we know the nuance. And, you know, this is the part where, again, Representative Casper and I had a conversation this morning. We, we don't agree on a lot. But, you know, he and I want to make sure there's a transparent, open process. And, you know, like he said, you know, people are able to say what they want to certain folks, but a lot of us, because we have the expertise in PERS, know the truth or the history around other changes that have been made. So I could see it again, because the other concern we have to have is, you know, we're talking about having this session next week, and removing people from their everyday lives. There are people who have had to post-worm surgeries. There are people who are having to give up their jobs. I personally had to cancel a work trip. People are leaving their families and their communities. Well, what, 100 and some legislators are now going to be sitting in the chamber twiddling their thumbs while 40-some legislators are sitting downstairs actually enacting the policy and having the conversations.
At the heart of this is, is, is the issues at, at PERS. And it has been very frustrating to me, the way the PERS Board has behaved. And that's not me exonerating everything that the legislature's done either. But it's, I mean, it was a heavy lift to get pension reform over the finish line during the session. I realize that you were, you were opposed to that. But on the other hand, it's like the law was passed, and, and right after the law was passed, we have the Executive Director of PERS go to the Bismarck Tribune and just absolutely toxic comments about it's the worst mistake we've ever made. Is it not right that the people who pass the pension reform, and frankly, the governor who signed into law, who had called for it, that they have, they lack confidence in this PERS Board's willingness to, under the current leadership, willingness to, to carry out, you know, the reforms that were passed?
My answer would be yes, Rob, if it wasn't based on conjecture and what people are perceiving it to be. Now, I agree. Scott Miller, you know, said some things that people don't like. I think he's entitled to his opinion, just like every other public employee. But the reality is, is he has said publicly, and so has the, the current Chair of the PERS Board, that the law is the law, myself included. I'm not, I do not support it. So now they have to implement the law.
Why should we believe them? Let's, let's put this in a different context. What if the governor comes out and he's got a new initiative on seat belts or something, right? Like, they have the Vision Zero thing. And, and his-
Because the governor, the governor doesn't hire the Executive Director of the PERS Agency. The board does.
Okay. But, but is, is the PERS Board not, they argued in their Supreme Court case that they are part of the executive branch?
They are. They're an independent arm of the executive branch.
Who appoints? Who appointed the current Chair of the Board of the PERS?
As I understand it from public, well, I think it was Joel Heidkamp's show, but essentially Tammy Miller did. You know, it was her recruitment of the person to that position.
Okay.
And appointed by the governor, of course.
Appointed by the governor. Right. Why, why should it be that, that, that somebody who is appointed by the governor could turn around and actively oppose the governor's policy agenda? And he can't, he's not allowed to remove that person? Like, if the head of the North Dakota Highway Patrol was out there actively opposing what Governor Burgum was trying to do with public safety, could he not then remove that person and replace it with somebody? Why, why is that such an unfair thing? Other than the fact that you oppose the pension reform that, that they passed?
Sure. Yeah. And my answer to that is looking at, I want to remove the conversation about higher patrol, because that's not a political point either. But the governor gets to hire that person. That's his cabinet level position, right?
Right.
And so he's hiring that person.
Yes.
The PERS Board has a fiduciary responsibility to the fund and to the premium holders of that, or, you know, the policy holders of that fund, which is, of course, the legislature, the taxpayers of North Dakota, and the, and the public employees who are receiving those benefits. I think that we have to make sure there's a firewall between political engagement and making the decisions that are important based on the information people have. Now, I understand the governor has a position, as do now the majority of the legislature, and that has been enacted, that we no longer will have a defined benefit plan. But there are those of us, and I'm, I'm not to the level of a, what the chairperson is at, or Scott Miller, or the board, in terms of understanding the actuariales. But they, these are people who are saying, we aren't doing the fiduciary responsible thing by closing the plan.
But there's other people who have plenty of expertise in the area of pension to disagree with them. And I guess that's, that's my problem is, is Mona Rindi Tedford, Tedford Rindy, excuse me, I apologize for getting her name wrong. She, I mean, she actively lobbied the legislature to not pass this bill. She, she sent letters, she did everything. Scott Miller, obviously, and I don't, I don't begrudge them that. But it's like when a new administration comes in, like, like if we set the policy and you're against the policy, then you should get out of the way. Because implementing this, well, what I'm really worried at, and especially when I've talked to former, like former Majority Leader John Dorsso, who talked about, you know, the PERS Board fought them, and he felt, played political games when they tried to do pension reform 10, 15 years ago. And you could argue that if we'd done the reform then, instead of now, we might not have been facing down a $2 billion budget shortfall. And it frustrates me to hear them talk about fiduciary responsibility when their only solutions to that shortfall are either the taxpayers pay more money, or the public employees take less. Either the plan costs more. I don't know that that's a fiduciary, I think we're playing games here. I worry that, that it's because, that because the Executive Director and the Chair of the Board have the right politics, then suddenly it's okay for them to oppose the governor. And if we had Governor Heidi Heitkamp, and it was, it was, it was a Republican in there who was pushing it back, I feel like there'd be a lot of people singing different tunes.
I would just, I would not be one of those people. I would agree, these are independent. Now, the difference-
I don't think they should be independent. I think that's, I think that's absurd.
How they're set up in statute.
Well, I would like to change it. I think we could change it. I think we should change-
Let's talk about the fiduciary. Okay. You know, former Representative Dorsso made that claim. And I think one of the biggest mountains we moved, serving on the retirement committee last interim, was the public acknowledgement by the current legislators, some of whom have had cast, we have casted votes on this, recognizing that we should have done more 10 years ago, when we did not contribute to our, our responsibilities the legislature to continue to fund the plan, based on a plan that was committed to with the public employees. Now, we want to put a majority of legislators who politically did not want to fund the plan, because there is a political argument to be made to starve the plan, so you get in this position that we are in. This is why it's important that we have independent bodies in some of these entities. This is why our investment board is of independent nature. It's not an investment board made up of legislators who want to make sure that our friends who have great startups are getting their things funded. It's, it's looking at what's best for the fund and the future of North Dakota and whoever your fiduciary responsibility is to.
I think it's a good way to-
We are political people as legislators and as the governor.
Yeah.
The PERS Board, I think, is independent.
I think it's a joke to say that they're not. When you, when you look at the comments of Scott Miller, and you look at the comments of Mona Tedford-Rindy, and tell me that they're not political, Josh, give me a break. They're playing politics.
They may have evolved into, I don't, I'd have to think more about my response than that. But they were acting in their fiduciary responsibility. And both of them have publicly stated, and it's on the record, that now that this is law, they are working to enact it.
I think they're lying. I don't think that they'll work. I do not, I do not trust them to enact the law in good faith.
I don't trust half my colleagues in the legislature to enact on good faith. But we still let those people make decisions, you know, it's, I understand.
Your colleagues in the legislature were elected. These are appointees. Well, Scott Miller wasn't an appointee.
Well, what some are. Scott is hired by the PERS Board.
Right.
And now that we're trying to have a political takeover of an independent, this is, this is not good for our government. This is not-
I think it's wonderful. I think it's wonderful for our government. I look forward to it being taken over. I think we ought to, I think we ought to destroy the independence of the Board of Higher Education. I think it's wonderful. I think it's wonderful for our government. I, I look forward to it being taken over. I, I think we ought to, I think we ought to destroy the independence of the Board of Higher Education. I think we ought to destroy the independence of the state investment board, because we don't, I don't want bureaucrats in state government who have no accountability to the taxpayers, making these decisions. I understand democracy is not perfect. And a lot of times we elect people who do stupid things, but that is not, that is not an excuse to do things this way. This is a very stupid way of doing them, and I look forward to tearing all these things down.
Rob, just because something's bad does not mean it can't get worse with the wrong solution, something I learned the very hard way when I was in the legislature.
Fair point.
We spent, we spent a lot of time on that. I do, I know we're limited on Representative Bush's time. I'll wrap it up to the money question. I asked this of Representative LaFleur last week. He very honestly said, I don't know for certain, so I'm more asking you, Josh, not as a response, but as a, see if there's an update with legislative management. There's about $140 million ish up for public funds, funding these public agencies. This is an unprecedented throwing out of the O M B budget by the Supreme Court. Do you know what happens? And how they align funds that have already been spent, because they've been spent, because they were supposed to have on state agencies versus the rest of the budget? Do you know how that's going to be squared up, how it's going to be precedent for the future?
Well, I think. Part of what we have to understand is that fortunately, there's not a lot of funding in the O M B bill for the entire state government, right? It's, we're looking at the agency that is O M B funding their staff and their operations. Now, there is the merit, I forget what we called the package, but the, the package of funding that was to help get public employees up to a number of them up to a certain pay range before we started doing their salary increases. But again, those agencies had money allocated, they could front load it, we can repay it based on authorizing it now. So those mechanics were all maneuvering. The big issue really is, because we weren't funding a lot of things other than a couple pet projects that are on stall now, you know, when we look at the behavioral health center out in western North Dakota, we look at this conversation around the fertilizer plant. So it, you know, as I understand it, the urgency is the fact that we have public employees in the office of management budget that need to get paid.
Last question, Josh, do you think, I mean, obviously this is going to set a precedent for how the legislature does its business going forward in that, in that the, the, the court has said no more multi-issue bills, so no more Christmas tree bill at the end. And, and I say that, it wasn't always, I mean, it wasn't always just about pet projects and stuff. A lot of times it was correcting bills that had been previously passed. So I realize that this is going to make the process more arduous. My impression is I like that everything's going to get an up or down vote, and we're not going to be able to, to pass things by tying two things together anymore. I like that. Is that how you feel as well?
I do, very much so, you know, and I'm someone who sat at that table, I think it was three times, maybe it was only two times, and got to do some horse trading, right? I, I will fully admit, you could look at the record.
I don't, I don't blame you guys for that. I, I have been writing about the legislature for 20 years, and they've been doing the Christmas tree bill at the end. So I, I don't blame anybody who is still doing it. That practice started a long time ago. The court said no more. Okay, you know.
Transparency will be better. The issue will be how we manage the session. And I think that's something for us as leaders to make sure that we are moving things in an efficient manner ahead of time. Or you're going to see what you saw this last session where we make up what a day is and what a day isn't.
Right. Well, that's what I'm worried about. I, I mean, my hope, my very Pollyannaish hope is that it would mean we get fewer nonsense bills that we're wasting our time in, or, or maybe if we're going to adapt to it, that we instead go and allow, maybe allow committees to kill some of these bills. And not everything gets a.
Or focus the nonsense bills and show who the nonsense legislators are and give them more focus. So they.
They got, they got plenty of focus, and I don't think they mind it at all, Ben, is the, is the sad thing. Anyway, all right. Well, we actually, we have used more, Josh is so gracious. We've gone way, five minutes over time, and he hasn't yelled at us or anything. So that's very nice of him. Thank you so much for coming on, Josh. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Great to be with you guys. Always a good conversation. Thanks.
Hi there. My name is James Wallner. I produce and host the podcast Dakota Spotlight, a true crime podcast that tackles historical and unsolved crimes in the upper Midwest. Follow along with me as we search for a missing girl, attempt to solve a 45 year old murder and much, much more. That's Dakota Spotlight Podcast, anywhere you get your podcasts or at inforum.com/podcasts.
All right, welcome back. So, you know, obviously special session starts next week. It's going to be something to behold. And, and I mean, I, I think it's an open question, like how can they shut the door? And when I say shut the door, I mean, get what they needed to get done and get out and not have it turn into a nightmare. I, I mean, and I'm looking at, you know, I.
And even do it properly. It's $140 million. Like, that's not a quick thing to pass.
And you look at the way, you look at the way that the Republican Party in North Dakota is fractured. It's not unlike the House Caucus in Washington DC, the House Caucus that cannot even elect a Speaker of the House right now. So we could very well have that same problem here in North Dakota where we have a special session going on that they can't get closed again for want of consensus around, around what they're trying to get done.
And it comes down to our more serious minded people who ran to govern, willing not just to govern, not just to vote, but to actively work to make, to probably at election time, silence those that want to become more legislative influencers. And I, you know, we need more George Kaisers and less, you know, folks trying to get likes on social media, which is an easy thing to say, but it takes organization and it takes organization at district conventions, at primaries. It takes organization on the part of the Democrats to be the loyal opposition. It's not, it's a, it's a, it's ice skating uphill right now, being a Democrat in a lot of these legislative districts, but we got to find people to do that too. We need to have a healthy, vibrant democracy rather than one being held up by four or five people that really want attention. When state budgets, people's paychecks and how we govern our states at stake. I, I'm on a soapbox, but.
So, and this, this is an anecdote, but I think it illustrates what I'm talking about. Which is that we had this group come through, they were called Yes Every Kid, they're a school choice group. And they were talking about how they were going to, they were going to have a, I, I wrote about it, I reported, they were going to have a big campaign on running. They wanted, they wanted their issue.
School choice bill from last session again during special session.
They wanted a school, not the same bill. They, they wanted something different. I don't know the specifics of what they wanted.
Almost kudos to them for being very public and open about it, even though I disagree that it's the time to do it. They, they weren't being stealth agents. They were saying out loud, this is something we want.
They came out and said that they wanted to bring it up during the special session. Now they've, they've since withdrawn. They're not going to do that.
Which is kind of breaking news, actually.
Yeah. Well, and I, I mentioned it in my column I wrote, I wrote, I published earlier today. But in, when, when the news first broke, the reaction, I, I called State Representative Claire Corey for reaction to that, because she sponsored a school choice bill earlier this year. And her reaction was, you know, I'm a big advocate for school choice. Obviously she sponsored the bill. But she says, I don't think this is the right time. I think this is inappropriate. That's the attitude from Representative Corey that we need going into this session is very like, yes, I'm passionate about a lot of things. Yes, there's a lot of things that I'd like to have a debate about and see get done. But it's not the right time. This isn't the right time for our state. I, I, the problem is.
And it doesn't matter what the issue is. It could be a lefty talking about increasing minimum wage. It could be a full elimination of income tax. It doesn't matter.
This is not the right time. This is not the right time for those debates. The regular session is the right time for those debates. When we all know when it's going to happen, everybody's prepared for it. The lobbyists are there, the interest groups are there, people have prepared their testimony, they've made their travel plans to get down to Bismarck so they could come testify. That is the time to bring up those things. This is the time to fix what the court has put in front of the legislature. They get that fixed and they get out of Bismarck. That's what they got to do. Don't forget the fact that, you know, legislative session costs tens of thousands of dollars per day to the taxpayers. I think that, I don't know what the number is, 64,000, I think was the number. It's somewhere in there.
It's 64,000, I will say in perspective, because, and it's hard to do this with government budgets, because so many millions and billions get thrown around. It is very small compared to the budget that we are talking about. It is not as if there'd be an, an option to let this O M B department be unfunded at to the tune of $140 million, because it would be an unfair, you know, eliminating paychecks for people that are working to earn them. It would be a way to, you know, stop government, where we have to have this special session unfortunately, due to the Supreme Court ruling. But I will say, and it's a soapbox I've been on many times, but I think it just continues to prove the point. The medium's the messenger a little bit and the format to how you pass budgets is different per state, but the way we do it in North Dakota is to pass a budget in April of an odd year and hope it holds for 20 months until the next year. I don't know if it fixes it, but if we met annually versus every other year, would we need to jump in now, or could we do more of a Band-Aid maybe now and not have the threat of a special session? Because we still don't have legislative session for another 15 months.
I, I, I have come around the idea of annual sessions, and I know there's a lot of lawmakers that don't want to do it. I know there's a lot of voters frankly, who don't want it. But I don't know how we govern this state right now with all the things that we've got going on, the energy, the agriculture, carbon capture. You know, we've got a hydrogen hub coming in, our population is higher than it's ever been in state history. There is so much going on. And what would you think about this idea? Like, I, because it wouldn't even require an amendment of the constitution. The constitution gives us.
It's 80 days every two years.
80 days every two years. They can use them however they want. So split, split it in, like do, do like a session that is specifically on appropriations and then do a session the next year that is specifically on policy. And then if you, if you need, if you need to have a policy bill during the, because there's something came up, or you need to have an appropriations bill during the policy session, then there's a delayed bills committee, or maybe there's a function where you could come in through, hey, this is an emergent situation. We need to put this bill in, you know, something like that I think would work very well. It wouldn't require a change to the state constitution, nor would it be, I mean, in, in reality, you wouldn't have the legislators meeting anymore in terms of day count than they do now.
There's a more flexible responsive to the times, and we live in a state that is in large part economically reliant on two commodities, agriculture and energy, that are traded on a world commodities market that go up and down to nothing of their fault or responsibility of the legislators. There are multiple other states, Wyoming, Utah, Oregon, that do full sessions, what they call five or six months. And then they come in during usually election years to do a 20 day session or a 35 day session, just a patch up, a constitutionally mandated short session that allows you to adjust budgets per different projections. Because right now, guess what? The projections are off from where they were in April, because things changed.
And then we start.
Really truly, we could open the door and change them to right, right? Because are you wasting taxpayer dollars by not abiding by the new projections right now?
And then, I don't know. And then also, you know, and then we try to, you know, because we don't do it, and we don't want to call the full legislature back in, and we start doing hinky stuff like having the budget section, making appropriate, or making financial decisions that they really shouldn't, which was the subject of a Supreme Court case not that long ago. So, you know, I, there, there's a lot going on here that I, I think, I think, you know, the court has, has created a situation where the legislative process is going to have to change, just in that they can't have multi-issue bills.
And if we have single issue bills increasing, we already are voting on a thousand bills, as Michael before reminded us last week, and he's absolutely right. You try doing a thousand bills in 80 days, you try keeping up. If we have even more, that's going to have to become an annual session.
I, so I think, I think you take the current 80 days, you split it up into two, into annual, two annual sessions during the biennium. And then, and then I think you empower committees to, to be able to clean house on some of these. It's very nice that every bill that gets introduced gets a committee hearing and a floor vote. I mean, that's a nice idea.
It's very unique to North Dakota. Not saying it's bad. It's unique to us.
It's very unique to us. I also think that it's a luxury that we can't afford anymore.
I think you're probably, it's probably getting to the point, because just so folks know, I was elected in 2012, and if I felt like it, now many people might have disagreed with some of the bills I, I produced. But if I was, you know, a real yahoo and I came and said, I think we should ban 7-Up for the, the beverage for the state of North Dakota, because I'm, you know, nuts. And I go to the committee and they say, that's the dumbest idea I've ever heard, 13 to zero, do not pass recommendation. That then still has to go to the House floor, where all 94 members must vote on it. And I can request time and I can get up and rail and say crazy stuff in this hypothetical about why 7-Up's evil and we need a ban for the state. Clearly not, you know, stupid prohibition that should not pass. And then they would vote on it. Now is that a waste of everybody's time? And I got nowhere. And if I voted for it to be 93 to one, yes. But the point is every legislator, all 147, can produce bills to that level of silliness and have it go all the way to the floor. And there's a sentiment that I think is correct and says, well, that's up to the voters to say, don't waste my time.
I mean, we don't even have to be that, we don't even have to, you know, make it up, a hypothetical. Representative Pritchard has posted on Twitter, now granted, I don't think he's put a bill in like this, but he's posted on Twitter that he wants to enshrine that Christ is king in state law. Now, obviously, that is blatantly unconstitutional. I'm not speaking against anybody's religious beliefs, but establishing a state religion is, is unconstitutional. It is illegal. We, that's against the First Amendment. You cannot do that. That would be a waste of time bill. Now, I, I think we could have it, and if people say, well, then, you know, these powerful committee chairs can, you know, hold sway. I think you could still have a mechanism where somebody could appeal a committee decision to the floor and have a vote and say, you know, override the committee, and maybe it's a super majority vote of the floor that somebody can petition for just to give, you know what I mean? Just to give like an appeal.
Give it a backup, and new things come to light with good faith bills otherwise get shot down that may help overturn the committee recommendation. That is, I think, something we should look at. The other piece before we go, I want to mention is Representative Bushay referenced something that I thought was very interesting. The governor has called us back in versus the legislature, and we talked about that.
Yeah.
The governor has said, I only want you there for five days, and I believe the language was by executive order, but as Representative Bushay confirmed, I was suspicious of. He can't, he ain't got any ability to do that. They can stay in, they can just stay in.
Yeah. No, they can, I, well, and again, that's the danger of, of, the, the, once the legislature's in session, they're in session until they essentially vote themselves out of session. I mean, the last.
By the way, is a good incentive. It's actually a, it's actually a good rule. I agree with Governor Burgum's sentiment, but I actually also like the fact that there are.
It's a separation of powers thing. The governor.
There's, there are consequences. Otherwise, the governor could just call anybody in. I don't think Doug Burgum would do this. But a bad faith governor could call people in for three days and say, you have to pass this. And then say, now you're out of session. It would give them too much power. I like it when it's open, it's open.
Yeah. No, it's a separation of powers issue. So, you know, I, 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 again, I think we both appreciate what the governor's trying to do. But he isn't.
Most, I think, agree with him. Majority Leader Mike LaFleur certainly agrees with them. Sounds like the Democrats agree with them. I'm, I, I will bet you, even though we haven't talked to him, that Senator Hoag agrees with them.
Yeah. Well, well, that's it. Again, special session coming up next week. We're going to have a lot to say about it. We'll have a show in the middle of the week next week. I'm sure there'll be a lot to talk about, but that's it.
Rob, are you going to go broadcast from Bismarck? Give us live updates. I'm trying to plant seeds in Rob's head, everybody.
You, you think that? No, I'm going to cover it just the way I always do. I think I do, I think I do a pretty good job from my, my command center up here in Minot. All right, that's it. We're going to put a pin in this show. Thank you so much for listening and we'll talk again. Did you know Forum Communications Company has a robust podcast library at inforum.com/podcasts? We have everything from politics, sports, true crime, outdoor adventure and more. Visit inforum.com/podcasts and explore them all today.